Our means are wide, live streamed on YouTube at Town of Camden dot Maine. And if you wish to participate by Zoom, go to the agenda and click on the link. That being said, we will invite any public comment on non-agenda items. Please step up and introduce yourself and.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you tonight about a topic that I think affects us all now.
State your name.
Yes, Sarah Rufflinquist, 36 Chestnut Street.
Thank you.
But this is an issue that affects us all now and will affect us for generations to come. And that is the level of carbon emissions that we have being generated here in Camden. After the last 10 years or so of living downtown and working downtown on Chestnut Street, I really became aware of a lot of cars that are parked and are still running on Chestnut Street, whether they're outside the post office or Camden National or French and Braun, cars just sitting there empty and running, most of the time without anyone or any living being that I can see in them. So I started doing a little bit of research about how localities try to deal with this issue. And I came across some really interesting things that helped to educate me a little bit about the topic. An hour of automobile idling burns approximately one-fifth of a gallon of gas and releases nearly four pounds of carbon into the air. Excessive amounts of carbon in the atmosphere can contribute to global warming. I think we all know that. That's from, this is from an article, and I'll share a copy of this with you. It's from a group in Montana that is trying to raise the community's awareness of issues around air and water quality in a town I'd never heard of or a county I'd never heard of, Ravalli County, Montana. Anyway, I looked a little closer to home in Acadia National Park. On their website, they have a policy discouraging idling. And part of the data that they share is that in the U.S., six billion gallons a year or 60 million tons of carbon a year, $22 billion spent in idling cars and trucks. So anyway, it's definitely an issue. I looked around. There's a very handy website that gives you all of the idling regulations of the states, and I'll share that with you as well. Maine has a five-minute in any 60-minute period limit on idling with fines attached to it. It has some limitations in terms of temperatures between zero and 32 or below zero, and also then, you know, traffic conditions, vehicles that need to idle in order to maintain refrigeration equipment, all that kind of stuff. So I know there's a lot out there, but I know at least in several instances, it's not being enforced. I had one instance this summer where a nice shiny red, brand-new pickup truck parked about 20 feet from my house across the street in the diagonal parking there. And I heard the truck because it was kind of loud, and I could see that it was idling and that the people were getting out and walking away. And it was about 75 degrees. It was dusk, so the sun was going down, and they were in the shade of the buildings there. And so it wasn't hot, and there were dogs in the car. And I said, could you not idle your car while you go off to wherever? And I basically was told to pound sand, and they didn't come back for an hour. So I know this is, you know, and that's a very isolated incident, but it's not that unusual. I will see cars outside my house. So I have to go around, shut the windows, turn on the heat pump, which I wouldn't otherwise do on a beautiful evening like that. So it's been a concern of mine, but it wasn't until recently, when I read an article in the New York Times about the link between carbon emissions and things like Alzheimer's, Lewy body dementia, and Parkinson's disease. A bunch of people, doctors and scientists around the world have been studying this. And I'll just give you a few of the excerpts. Higher exposure to particulate matter, the greater the extent of Alzheimer's disease. The odds of more severe Alzheimer's pathology at autopsy were 20% greater than donors who had lived where there were lower levels. Of the, one other quote that I thought was really helpful. Chronic particulate matter exposure was linked to hospitalization for Lewy body dementia. Doing studies on laboratory mice, administering particulate matter to them, clear dementia-like deficits were demonstrated. And 32 studies conducted in Europe, North America, Asia, and Australia found a dementia diagnosis to be significantly associated with the long-term exposure to particulate matter and other pollutants. So that got my attention. I have a neighbor next door who's spiraling downward in his own Alzheimer's case, living 20 feet from Chestnut Street where a lot of cars are sitting idling. And I hate to think that there's a link to that, but I think it's quite possible that there could be. So in terms of towns around, I know you're all familiar with many of the things that Bar Harbor is doing. Bar Harbor has and is, as far as I know, the only town in Maine that has a stricter ordinance than the Maine law, which restricts idling during the period from May 1 through the October holiday in downtown areas only. I couldn't find what the penalty was for that, but it is an ordinance prohibiting idling for more than five minutes. And I did also find that there are a lot of towns that are doing, thinking about or formulating anti-idling ordinances as part of their community resilience plans. Bodenham was one, Thomaston was one. The University of Maine has, through their Office of Sustainability, created a policy against idling, and also the Town of Kinnick has an anti-idling ordinance, or not ordinance, but a policy. So I don't know what Camden can do, but I think we can do something. And I'd like to think that people will recognize that it's not, you know, it's not a tree-hider kind of thing. It's a, this is going to affect your health and your children's health for generations to come. So let's do what we can. And I'll be glad to share copies of stuff.
Yeah, if you've got some material, you can leave with us.
Absolutely. And this is the stuff from Bar Harbor.
Would it be easy for you to also email that?
Glad to, absolutely.
I lose papers sometimes.
Yeah.
Thank you for putting our attention.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the time.
Sarah, no, appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak on a non-agenda item? Mark Ratner, welcome.
Hi, my name is Mark Ratner. I am a citizen of Camden. I'm also county commissioner for District 3, which covers Camden for Knox County. First off, I'd like to congratulate Crisso. I've been here since you joined the board, so congratulations and welcome. And I wanted to talk about you're being invaded by the county tonight. There's almost as many of us as there are you tonight, so it's interesting. But I wanted to say a few things about the county before we move into that business. Number one, a lot of people have asked me since I made the transition from select board to county commissioner, what does the county do? What are they? And basically, I look at us and I've discovered we're like the silent foundation that helps make things run and makes things work in the county. And it's very service-oriented. So a lot of people, it's invisible to a lot of people. But you see, we provide deeds and probate and obviously law enforcement, which you'll hear about in a little bit, district attorney. And one of the things that made the press in the last six months or a year or so is the dispatch center, 911 call center. And it has not been in the newspaper lately. And that's because after a lot of anxiety about what was happening with it, we have fixed the problems that we had at the dispatch center. It's got virtually a full staff for the first time ever. We've hired a new communication director for the call center, and things are going very, very well. And it was an expensive fix, but it was much less expensive than is, as had been talked about, is if the different towns had decided to have their own systems. So I just wanted to officially get it out there that things are going very well for dispatch. I think our law enforcement people here will double back me up on that. So I wanted to make sure that you do that. And just as people come up, we have two representatives from the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Patrick Polkey is here, and Chief Deputy Kurt Andrick is here. Our EMA Director Candace Richards is here, and our County Administrator Amber Christie is here as well. So you've got some of the top people in the county here to talk about what we do. And so it's exciting. We're trying to be out more visible, more in contact with people so people know what we're doing and how we're doing. And any questions you have for me? If not, I'll go sit down and let everybody here make all sorts of presentations. So thanks for having us.
We're not allowed to ask questions during this time, they've told me, but I would love to, but.
Okay, you do know where to find me.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, any further non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will get on to approval of the minutes from the October 21st meeting. Any additions, corrections, revisions?
In line 154, my name is misspelled.
Oh.
Finding little Easter eggs.
Oh, indeed. Good hunting.
Shoot, ready to go here. The, and the part about.
Do you have the line number?
No. Sorry. Working on that, Susan. It's the speed limit part. It looks to be line 203. That the, in terms of identifying the places where we are going to express concerns about the posted speed limit, Mechanic Street, my intention was to say Mechanic Street overall, that 35 mile-per-hour stretch of Simonton Road in between Mechanic Street and John Street was something I was highlighting. But I think more specifically, we were also empowering town staff some to manage that, but to express sort of broad concerns rather than I. So basically, I think we should change it to Mechanic Street and a section of Simonton Road.
Okay.
I don't know if we intended to make this a complete list or not, but I would like to maybe just remove the part about that short little section.
Okay. And. So removing, would you prefer that it not say Mechanic Street, but identifies the Simonton Road piece specifically?
Well, we could take just Mechanic Street, just the whole thing, just Mechanic Street, and then a section of Simonton Road.
Okay.
But I think that's a lower priority. If you let me go on and on, I'll keep adding more. But we're trying to focus on things where there was kind of general broad agreement.
Yeah.
And we're just amending what we talked about, not continuing.
Right, right. So just. Any other observations about the minutes?
I believe on row 235, I guess we could say that we spelt Chris's name incorrectly because it is Ralt instead of Nolan. So 235 should reflect Chris Nolan.
Oh, oh, the paid parking working group. You're in, that's, it's you and not Chris Rowe.
I'm sure this will be a continual theme.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
If it, I am either Christopher or Crisso. I am never Chris.
Chris, so in line 237 then.
So there's several places in that that.
Last name, first name.
Yep.
So 235 should be Nolan, 237.
Should be Crisso.
And replace all mentions of Chris Rowe with either Crisso Rowe or Christopher for really getting into it.
We go, the minutes kind of go over. Sometimes it's first name, sometimes it's both, last name. And maybe it's just a consistency of just using last names. Might be the best for everybody. Because even in that section, it's like sometimes it's Ken, sometimes it's.
Right.
Sometimes, you know.
Yeah, Human Resources committee door taking over from Ken. Be consistent with the approach.
Let's be consistent.
And that would also just simplify, especially.
That'd be a refreshing change.
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Can I have a second? Okay.
I don't know why that was so funny.
Hold those in favor. All right, thank you. Good to get off on a cheery note there. Okay, consent agenda. If there are no objections, we will approve the consent agenda as presented for renewal of the virtual enlagering licenses for the Camden House of Pizza, Owl and Turtle Bookshop Cafe, and the Town Motel. And it appears that those are in order. So we will approve the consent agenda. Okay, moving on to select board reports. Who has got something to report?
I could, but I'm, it looks like Ken was going for that.
Ken, would you like to?
No, I have just a couple of questions. Just noting that next, our next meeting on the 18th is not a formal select board meeting. It's a workshop.
Correct.
It's unfortunate that the Chair of the Cemetery Association can't make it. That I don't know if there's any flexibility in that date, but the Cemetery Association is meeting, and their regular meeting is on December 2, which is also our first meeting in December. Maybe we should just be aware that there may be a chance for a follow-up meeting as part of the Cemetery Association meeting on the 2nd.
I tend to feel like we shouldn't do it if the Chair of the Cemetery Committee can't be there. But that's just my quick reaction just hearing that. But I would strongly prefer that, is Chip, right? He's also the very knowledgeable member. And I feel it's really important that he can be there.
I don't know what his calendar is. I just know that he said that it's not a good night.
Right, that he was away, he told me that he was away through most of November.
Would he be able to do Zoom maybe, or?
It didn't sound like it for the November meeting. I mean, I have no attachment to one night or the other. I know the cemetery, the Green Burial Group is hard at work preparing, but they would be as prepared, if not more so, for a December 2 meeting. I won't be here, you're going to be convening that because I'll be out of town on December 2. But I think the meeting should go ahead. It should definitely go ahead.
But you are going to, would be here for the other one.
I'd be here for the 18th, but not for the.
Oh, so we have to decide between doing it without you and doing it without.
Chair of the Cemetery, Chair of the Select Board. I think having Chip be present is probably.
I think he should be there too, though.
Oh, later in the month.
Well.
Second meeting of December.
There's no, there's no, there's no race on this.
No. I mean, what do we think? Do we want to postpone it to the second meeting? Or we don't have the calendar?
You know, you've got significant interest in being there.
I mean, I, it. The way I look at it is it's a, it's a work in progress. You know, we're beginning a conversation. That was how I responded to Chip's email to me, was that the intent is to have the two committees begin this conversation about what we all need to learn about the process. And so, you know, invariably, there will be people who can't attend all of these conversations. And I felt like since we already had this sizable group who turned out, that we would go ahead. But I'm open. It doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
It'd be a little, we're kind of a bit far down the track of organizing it, so it would be a bit difficult to, I mean, it's never impossible, but there has been work gone into getting everybody.
Yeah.
Prepared for the 18th or getting things organized for the 18th.
And I think to the extent that it is the beginning of a process, the fact that Chip can't be at the first meeting, he will.
He'll still have opportunity to participate.
I mean, I'm going to defer to the board if there's, if you want to. I mean, I guess it would be my.
I mean, I could certainly, we're going to record it and all of that stuff, right?
Right, yeah. So he's, he's not going to miss anything.
I mean, if, you know, it's one of those things, if the rest of, if the rest of Cemetery Committee will be there, the Green Burial Group and all of us, that's the first meeting.
Yeah.
To have the conversation, and it's unfortunate. But we also know that we're moving into a time of year that schedules become difficult. And this is on the now, on the calendar, that that's the set date for the workshop.
Yeah.
I, I sort of had your instinct as well of like a first thought of like, oh, if Chip can't be there.
Yeah, I guess I would be inclined to.
You know, we're not asking for hard results out of this workshop.
I just thought we were also going to combine some of the, be able to maybe talk about the sidewalk pathway stuff a little bit and just kind of.
You still can.
Yeah, Chip is just more not, I think his opinion matters. But whatever, everybody else, I don't, this is no need to, whatever you guys decide is fine.
I think that this first conversation, we're going to focus mainly on green burial. And then, you know, I welcome the opportunity for us to have a much more open communication with the, you know, if we're going to talk about the sidewalk to, we can, you know, that involves Public Works and.
I just think we need a better understanding of the cemeteries overall and was hopeful that we wouldn't just be starting with a presentation about green burial, but also sort of reciprocal education about this is what the Cemetery Association does, and these are the challenges that they face. And this is how, just to understand a little bit about that relationship.
I mean, I'm sure that the members of the Cemetery Committee who will be present will be able to inform us. Chip isn't the only one who's in the position to do that, so.
Are they going to present a little bit too, or just?
We can certainly, you know, make that part of the.
Ask them what they think is important that we understand about the.
Yeah, for sure. So let's stick with it, and then we will just keep that, those channels open so that we can make progress on that as well. So, okay.
Is there a, is there, to your point, Allison, is there an agenda set as to what the discussion is about so it doesn't go askew? Is it about green burial? Is it about the sidewalk on Mountain Street? Is it about both? What can we do so that people are prepared for the discussion?
If we want to keep the sidewalk out of it, then I do think it's important that the Cemetery Committee.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
I think it's important, if we are to meet on the 18th, that we go there with a clear objective. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to, we'll stick with that, and we will work up an agenda so that it doesn't, yes, I agree. Anything else from the board?
Yeah, so one thing I forgot to mention last time that we took out of the library meeting is that they, a big part of their fundraising is book sales, so donated book sales. And I had been under the impression that they were kind of inundated, but they do have a strong desire for high-quality children's books. And they can resell those, and it really helps to fund everything. So Tuesdays from 9 to 12, you can drop off books. And really, they're happy to take any books and especially newer ones. And they'll tell you if it's not good. But definitely don't just automatically drop off all your stuff at Goodwill because our library would love that also. And then just, the Conservation Commission has been working on the draft for an RFP to follow up on the annual dashboard conversation that we had. So that'll be, they've been really working a lot on that. I think some with Dave and Audra too. So that'll go out here before too long. And then when we get the responses back, that'll come to the Select Board. So that has been good. The McGonagall River Citizens Advisory Committee, as it's regathering, we did a brief tour of the East and West Dam. And only a few of the committee members were there. Some of them had not been able to do the previous ones. And also a couple of members of the Watershed Association came too. Many people have never seen the East and West Dam. So Dave went through the Crowdwater app, which is where he puts every few days what the water level is, what the adjustments are, all of that. You can follow along with it. Talked about why the lake is low. The gates have been set to minimum flow for the duration of the summer. We're in a severe, I forget whether we're in extreme or severe drought. Maybe the folks at the emergency management can tell me. But very dry. So that was explained. And then there was some conversation about trying to use, before it gets really cold, the opportunity to do some tours of just getting out in different parts of the watershed. Everybody seems to understand what we're all talking about better when they've seen things. And then as, along those same lines, there has been an effort to do some river cleanups. And I actually had a really great opportunity to get a small tour of the work that has been done on 39 Main Street with Amy Lacature and her husband David. And I've been blown away. That has been really fun to see. They, not everybody knew how much junk was under that building and not all of it from that building over the years. But they really went above and beyond and got all of that stuff out of there. And it really makes their section of the pond there look just so much better, which has also led Amy especially to have some really good insights. When you spend a lot of time down underneath the buildings there and you see the water in the bridge, she had something that she wanted to show me about maybe the bridge design, and I think some really great observations. And we also noticed that there's tons of trash, tons of stuff that's accumulated in neighboring properties. And so David Fisher from the Smiling Cow has also been really enthusiastic about cleaning things up. So we did a first sort of test cleanup last weekend where we pulled a lot of stuff out of the river. Amy and David did, I, these people are real go-getters. And so a lot of stuff got removed. And we're going to continue that again this weekend if the weather moderately cooperates. So if anybody wants to join, this is not the type of river cleanup that is for everybody because it's a very inaccessible, some of the river is quite inaccessible. It's slippery, it's, it's not for everybody. It's also not a place we want to always be sending town employees down. But, you know, we pulled out stuff from the woolen mills, bobbins and threads and all kinds of things. So if anybody's interested in that, some of the members of Mercak are going to do that. And then hopefully also get a chance to have Amy show them some of the observations about the buildings. And it was really, a really, I think, a great development to have people down there looking really carefully at everything, which has not happened in many years. And, and, you know, excited about the brainstorming that's coming out of that.
Well, and it's a great conclusion after the process that we had to go through to come to this place of, you know, enthusiasm and a really good outcome.
Thanks, Allison. I'm eager to see the East-West Dam. I'd never been there because it's private property, I assume. I've paddled up to it, but I'd never been there. So is the, are the MRCAC meetings going to be posted? Because seeing it in person makes a huge difference.
We should just keep doing more, we hear that so much.
You're so.
You're, you're so right, because Abby Kidder came with us, and she was saying this was the first time she had seen the West Dam.
The director of the Watershed Association.
Yeah, and she, and for the same reason that you're saying, she just doesn't feel comfortable because it's like a private easement across private property. So I think that there were several Mercak members who couldn't make it to that meeting, so I think that we need to go back out there anyway.
Super.
So we'll let you know, because there's, there's nothing that beats getting out there and just seeing how it all.
And go a little earlier, because now that it's dark, that stretch of Malino Road is.
We had like 20 minutes of daylight before. It was like, yeah.
And you're, I think you're, you had a question in there that said, are these meetings going to be?
Right.
Yes.
Do they show up on the town calendar?
Yeah, they're on the calendar.
Super.
Chris, anything you'd like to add?
There's a new building at the Snow Bowl.
Yes.
It went up in several sections and remarkably quick. It's now being plumbed and whatnot, and the ski swap is November 15th.
Oh, right.
At 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Snow Bowl.
Excellent.
If you've got old gear you want to get rid of, or you're looking for new stuff.
Great.
Take a look.
Thank you. I, Audra and I went on Friday to a fascinating, I think it was quite impromptu conference that was pulled together down in Southern Maine. We went to Biddeford, which by the way, Biddeford, oh my God, who knew?
Biddeford's got great stuff going on.
Happening little place.
It's happening. We were in this hotel that we could have been in Boston. It was very cool, great restaurants, lovely people, was so welcoming. However, the topic was a very, a group that's very focused. They pulled together people who are leaders in addressing hunger issues in, among schoolchildren. The director of Preble Street, who has been doing this work for over 20 years, spoke, a number of mayors, a number of heads of, of not-for-profits, school superintendents, the mayor of Portland, Mark Dion, who was in law enforcement in the legislature, there were a number of legislators there. I was so impressed by the, the sort, the level of commitment of people who are working in that space just consistently over the years. I mean, Donna Yellen from Preble Street is so inspiring, what she's done there, and that she's still at it 20, more than 20 years in. But we were able to point out that, as we discussed at our previous meeting, when we were looking at the general assistance guidelines, that we are in a very fortunate position in Camden, that we self-fund the general assistance, and we, and I think at this moment, and who knows when people's benefits are going to be restored, there are also questions about whether the low interest, the low-income heating assistance program is going to be funded. So to just reiterate to people who are within the sound of our voices, please reach out if you have a need, or reach out if you have a neighbor who has a need, because we can help, and we don't want anyone to do without, if you, if your circumstances have changed and you never had to ask before, and then you do need to ask, you're, we can protect your confidentiality. It's just, we don't want to see anybody in a cold house with an empty refrigerator because we can help. So that's all I've got.
Could we get something posted about that, just a, a short thing that can go out on the Facebook page and wherever else about the general assistance program and what's available to people?
Yes. Yeah, and we were talking, Audra and I were talking also about possibly just having some links to other resources as well, sort of centralizing that, but.
Right, those other funds, like the Montgomery Fund and the other ones.
Also other partner agencies throughout the county that are.
I mean, it's been so gratifying to see, I saw the director of AIO the other night, and he said, the outpouring from people in the community wanting to help or making donations has been so heartening. So it's first and foremost in people's minds, so we're grateful, and we're fortunate to live in a generous community. Okay, Town Managers Report, Audra.
Right, so I was going to talk about the Emerald Ash Bore, but Allison got to it, but I just wanted to acknowledge that Mark, Mark was here when that all began, so he gets to see kind of like, and finally we're implementing. So the state junior firefighter muster was held on October 26, and I'd like to congratulate our very own Bennett and Connor. They participated, and along with their teammate who's a junior firefighter in Canton, they placed in the top three of all the major events. Bennett took first place in the hose roll event. Because of their age, this is the last year they're going to be eligible to participate, but they definitely did Camden proud while they were there. And also, they've been asked by the coordinator from Scarborough to help them plan next year's event. So very proud of Bennett and Connor. MDOT is going to be paving the shoulder of Route 52 from Cross Street to Route 1 on the south side. There have been a lot of concerns raised by the residents along this stretch. It's quite chewed up on the shoulder for anybody who goes in that area. So MDOT is trying to be responsive to some of these concerns. It is just a, you know, stopgap measure. There needs to be much more work done, but that's going to be a lot of planning before there's a big project to address some of those issues. Rossin Avenue Bridge is still scheduled to be installed the week of November 10th, so that's good news that nothing is, pushed that back further. On October 30th, the Public Works Department had a meeting with residents of Park Street to talk about the road upgrades that are planned for next year. So those are going to be very similar to the work that was done on Gould Street this year, and the residents who attended expressed a lot of support. And Park Street is, is a street where there's been really poor, or there's, the stormwater infrastructure has deteriorated quite significantly, so they definitely understood the need for the project. Public Works is also repairing a cross-country stormwater line that runs from around 100 Mechanic Street to Harrison Avenue. So if anybody went by and saw, you know, some of the, I think it was like a catch basin out there and some construction equipment, that was the reason for that. The wet well for the new pump station at Mountainside has been set, and also the floats have been removed from Steamboat Landing. The Opera House had a piano donated by Bay Chamber Concerts, which was a very generous donation that they received that they weren't able to use, and they're very excited about this at the Opera House because it's going to allow them to do some interesting things with the Blue Cafe as well as Jazz in June. So I'd like to thank you, Bay Chamber Concerts, that was incredibly generous, and we really appreciate you thinking about the town. Today, we had an interesting meeting with a gentleman named Doug Erickson, who sits on the Thomaston Budget Committee as well as the Knox County Budget Committee. So Doug is looking to get support, starting in mid-coast towns, for a piece of legislation that, that he would like to propose, that would return a portion of revenue collected from speeding tickets to municipalities and counties, who are the ones that do the vast majority of speed limit enforcement. You know, this is one of these things that, for, for folks watching or, or people who aren't aware, the revenue from fines collected from speeding tickets all goes back to the state of Maine. None of it comes back to municipalities or the county. Yeah, so, yeah, so there's really, from a financial standpoint, not a public safety standpoint, going to be very clear about that, there's not a lot of financial incentive for municipalities or counties to do speed limit enforcement. We don't make any money from it. It costs us resources. We don't get resources from it. So the idea is that there would be a little bit of, it's, it's a need anyway. We all hear about the, you know, the speeding issues in the summer. Thomaston is dealing with the same problems that we're dealing with, with cut-through traffic and larger volumes of traffic. And so the thought was, you know, that this would help address some of those problems as well as, you know, provide a revenue stream for the agencies who are responsible for doing this sort of work. So we were the very first municipality Doug reached out to, and he's going to, you know, start making the rounds and trying to gain more support for this. And this is something that periodically communities, and I'm sure counties as well, have made a run at over the years, and from a state perspective, it typically isn't supported because they see it as revenue that, that they're losing. Doug is going to make the argument that he's, this is growing the pie, so they, they won't lose on as, lose out on as much as they think because there'll be some financial incentive to do more speed limit enforcement.
Because I've heard that some of the reporting that goes on when you actually, when you do the enforcement, that just the extra work from the officer is already a disincentive, which obviously takes more time, and so, I mean, it makes sense to.
Yeah. Another thing that, so this is one of my favorites is traffic or speed cameras, because that's, that's used in a lot of states and a lot of other countries, and it's not legal in Maine. And given sort of the nationwide shortage of law enforcement and the need for speed limit enforcement, it would seem like an obvious supplement to that, and something that could take a lot of pressure off, you know, the county, the state and municipalities. But there's a lot of resistance.
From our own senator, who's no longer there. I contacted him one time, and he was like, let me, let me tell you why I don't support that, and.
That was brought up by Doug. He was like, that, that is a, I've heard that that is the third rail, and I'm not going to, I don't want that to ruin my proposal.
Somebody else is going to have to.
Yeah, exactly. He's like, I, no, those, those have to be bifurcated. So, but anyway, I thought, I told him that's, you can definitely count on our support.
Don't tell Doug I didn't have that.
All set?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, so our discussion items, we've got the Christmas by the Sea update, and Holly.
Oh, I just, just to, she's not going to be here, and also, I was going to say before we started, that was a little bit of a mistake to put it as a discussion item, because there's an action that's needed, which is the closure of Atlantic Ave.
Okay, so will we take it up as an action item and just move it down to under action items?
I move to move Christmas by the Sea to an action item, to be taken up after the other action item.
Right. Those in favor? Okay, so then we will get right on to discussion of Camden and regional police coverage. Thank you, gentlemen, for your patience, and ladies.
Good evening. It's kind of like alumni night here for me. The two representatives from the Sheriff's Department, the sheriff and the chief deputy were longtime employees of the Camden Police Department, so it's nice to have them back. It's kind of like sending your kids to college, and then they, you expect them to come back and pay some of that stuff back, so I'm trying to get a little of that back out of them, but I appreciate their service to the town. They've, they've gone on to have distinguished careers and.
Very good for both of you. Very proud of both of you.
And so, as you all know, nationwide, we have a shortage of police officers, and recruiting and retention still is problematic. And I've heard boards, and I've heard committees, and we've talked about sharing resources, and we have gotten to the points where in Camden and Rockport, I'm down two officers in each department right now. We are recruiting. We have some potential candidates for those positions. But in both departments, we're burning our staff out because they're working so much overtime. And when you burn good staff out, you know, they might want to go somewhere else. So we're trying to be creative in, in how we do things. So recently, after working a few weeks myself, doing 30-hour shifts, and just to fill in those gaps, we're trying to come up with a way that we could probably cover Camden and Rockport during some of our historically low-call volume times. So we thought we had a good plan, but as usually happens with a lot of things, bureaucracy gets in the way. And when you start talking to the Maine Department of Labor about this plan you have, well, you can't do that. So we had, the officers were all set, or we'd come up with a figure of, of paying some additional to work for that. But we found out through one source that you actually have to pay them at a much higher rate of pay to do that. So got me thinking. So I said, you know, let me give Patrick a call, the sheriff's office, and see if we could maybe do a little call sharing. Little history, a few years ago, we've always had a Knox County mutual aid agreement, but seeing these issues with coverage a long time ago, we went to a, pretty much a format that we have a working relationship. We don't want any officers in the county, any of our PDs going to any incidents by themselves, and there are times when that could happen. So we have worked out this agreement where if we know that another agency needs that assistance, we'll send our officers, and likewise, they do that. I really saw that firsthand when we lost Travis Ford in Rockport. These local agencies called me immediately, what do you need for coverage? We'll take care of that for you. And it was a huge, huge help for my staff to get adjusted. The sheriff's department provided coverage, Rockland PD covered for us, and those are the things that we have to do with each other. So in thinking about this, I talked to Patrick, and I said, you know, we look at the complaints all the time. Historically, we have times of the day where our numbers are with, probably below 1% of our average call volume. Is there an opportunity that you've got staff that you might be able to cover some of that time? And there was no delay in his answer. He's like, absolutely. Recognizing that both of our communities pay a high, very high county tax, thought that he could do that right now for no additional fees to that, to either town, which is great. That's allowing me to know that we have coverage, but I can bring officers in and put them in schedules where we can cover more of the higher-volume times with more officers, early evenings into late evenings. We've been, knock on fake wood, we've had about a month of doing this. I review the reports every day. The sheriff's office does the same thing. We've had, I think in the month of Oc, October, we had four instances where we would have had to have somebody respond, and those, those instances were easily taken care of by not having to have a response. We have some redundancy built in there, too. If there's a critical incident, units from other agencies, Rockport had a domestic a week or so ago, sheriff's department responded, Rockland PD sent an officer up. I knew about it the next morning because they didn't need to call. I'm also available for call out. We have officers that live in the area, too. Our basic thing is we need to get somebody coming if there is an emergency. We have that in place. I've looked at response times to some of the calls. It's all within acceptable ranges, and so far, it's so good. What people are going to see is they'll see a sheriff's department cruiser that might answer a complaint late night, might be a deputy, but in my, my years of experience, if you call at that time of the day, you don't care who's coming as long as they've got a badge and they can do the job. I know you probably have got questions about it, and I'm happy to answer it. Sheriff can answer. You know, we're in the infancy of this right now. I'd love to see it go long-term, but we all have the staffing issues. Sheriff's Department has them just like we do. There'll be times that they won't be able to, and we'll, we'll staff that, that time ourselves again. But I think right now, we're onto something that, that looks like it's going to be a benefit for everybody. And Patrick, you can come on up and talk about any part of it you'd like, or anything I've missed. Kurt, same thing. You know, it's, it's what we're going to have to do more of in the future, because there's just not the resources, and there's not. And I'll go to the housing market. You're not going to come in and buy a house, I don't believe, in Camden or Rockport or even the outside areas at what we're, we're paying, and we pay very well. Don't get me wrong, but medium, I'm not a real estate person. I'm there in $650,000 basically to get into the door for a house. Apartments are through the roof. We do need workforce, workforce housing. I don't see that coming. And we do have retirements coming down the road, too. I mean, this, this area, we're not all the young guys we were. So that's going to be problematic. So you're going to see that. And I think if we start now, and we build in those areas where we can share that. And I think if we start now and we build in those areas where we can share that. We already share in a lot of areas like training. By having, we have what we call specialists in our union contract. If they've achieved supervisory, extra supervisory trainings or instructor level trainings, we use those in-house instructors. So we don't have to send people out to training. We save on lodging, meals, travel, using those. We also work with each other in training issues. We did defensive tactics, which was mandatory for the last three years and will be again next year. And we had sheriff's department members come to some of our training, Rockland PD, we co-trained with those as well. Sheriff's department covers for us when we do firearms training. You know, we've, we've had an instance where the sheriff's department needed assistance out in Washington. We had a unit head out to Washington to help them. So we are doing that. We don't wait around to be asked to come either. Rockland had a bank robbery sometime ago. And, you know, I heard what was going on, so we started units from the north. I took the, that end of it to help coordinate the search down there. Another instance, you know, the chiefs kind of look out for each other. I know Tim Carroll had a barricade situation in January, I think of last year, cold. He'd been down there all day. Called him in the morning to see if he needed resources. He says, no, we're all set. We have the state police here, sheriff's department, Rockland PD. But at the end of the day, I knew as a chief, he'd been out there all day. Sometimes you need that break from somebody else and somebody else to talk to. And I went down and, you know, I was there to, to give that support and he's done the same thing for me. Patrick, all of us do that same thing. And we're, we're looking at those things that we can do together. So it is happening out there. I don't think any of us are ready to jump right on something, you know, taking bigger, bigger pieces of the pie here. Let's see how we do with this and see if, you know, eventually we can look at some cost savings by realigning shifts and coverages and things like that.
So during those hours that the, that the sheriff's department is providing coverage, is there physically an officer in town? Or is it only when there's a call that requires response? Like for, as far as normal traffic enforcement, for example? Is there, is there a sheriff's car in Camden during those?
So what we're doing with the sheriff's office is they have deputies that are out on patrol. And we have not asked for designated coverage because we still have an officer in Camden that works some midnights. And we have early ins, early outs where our staff is back in by 5:30. So we've tried to condense it down about two and a half hours. And, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm available for call out. And that's why we've built in those redundancies from other agencies that'll assist if we need it. Like I said, we've looked at the response times and I actually think that on the ones I've looked at, your deputies must have been sitting in Rockport because they're there. So you have a north and south, is that correct? Yeah, so they have a deputy that's, that covers this area. Route 90, is that the, that the division?
We split the two towns with.
Sure.
Well, Pat Holkey. So been in law force 25 years, 13 were here, the rest were at the sheriff's office. So also resident in St. George, not this area. So, but when Randy reached out, we talked through a lot of what he wanted for coverage. So if you know anything about the sheriff's office, we're short-staffed as well, but we're one of the only agencies that is fully staffed. So when he reached out, I was able to say.
Explain that.
Meaning just like your concerns of speeding and other kind of life, quality of life type of things. All the towns that we cover are, are constantly reaching out to both of us saying, we want more coverage. And I say, well, we only have so many deputies and we have many towns to cover. So when Randy reached out, he originally asked about, you know, would we charge for the, the coverage? I said, well, it depends what you want. If you want dedicated coverage, we would have to probably charge, but same problem. My people are already working a lot. We have a lot of overtime shifts and things that happen even with being fully staffed. So we talked about what he wanted. And it was more of, we have this, this gap that we think we can work with, it's a low call volume. Let's just see if we can use the deputies who are already on the road to cover that. So what I did is we have the north and the south is how we split the county at Route 90. There's a deputy in each zone and there's also a supervisor typically on. So there's usually three-ish, sometimes four, depending on the scheduling, deputies on covering the entire county. So that's minus the four towns that have their police departments, so Thomas and Rockland, Rockport and Camden. We will provide backup because it's still within the zone, but because you have your police departments, we don't typically provide primary response. So for the dedicated coverage, that would be a different look. We would have to talk more about that. However, the deputies do roam through every town. So a lot of times what they will do is they'll try to be in each town either a night or a few nights to try to just be more visible, to try to be that deterrent, if you will. So to his point, a lot of the times, they're already there. So you've got the north deputy is covering Camden and the south deputy is covering Rockport. They're also both covering each other, supervisors roaming throughout the county as well. So that's how we're kind of dividing it up in those hours that we're covering. And it's the same coverage as everybody else. And that's part of why I said that we would not charge is what every other town is getting.
So I kind of had a dry run at this. It was a year before last, staffing shortages. I took callouts seven days a week for 16 weeks while one officer was at the academy, just to give staff a break. So I was wrapped and ready for deployment from 2 o'clock on. And I think I had five complaints in that 16 weeks during the time period. And three of those were alarms and one was an accident. But that was at 5:30 in the morning, the other officer was coming out, but I started down anyway. My response time for emergency is 10 minutes. And a lot of these things that come in at that hour of the day are things that can be held over till the day shift. Somebody gets a late report accident. Somebody, 3 o'clock in the morning figures out, oh, my God, I've been the victim of a scam. Well, we're not gonna be able to do a lot. The detective's gonna be in at 7 o'clock. So those are the things. We look at those complaints. And it's typically alarms that come in. And we have a, without giving the playbook away, we have a way of doing alarms that's been different than in the past. And it's, it's working effectively.
Do we have our own detective and then Rockford has their own detective and then the county? Or do we, how does that work?
So we have a detective sergeant in Camden. Rockport has a lieutenant that does most of that stuff. We do share detectives. If I have cases that, a lot of times if Aaron's unavailable and the DA's office calls us with a sex offense case during the weekend, he's got the expertise that others don't in the department to do those. I'll call the sheriff's office or.
Does the sheriff's office have a detective?
Yep.
For? Kurt, Kurt.
Kurt was our detective.
I know.
And then he left.
So. I mean, I have absolutely no concerns. My only concern is that we're not, I guess, how little of it we've been doing. And when I had.
How little of what?
How little integration there is, how little coverage we. I, with this mutual, it had been my understanding over the years that, you know, that the sheriffs were covering everywhere that it wasn't like a just a mutual aid thing. Correct me if I'm wrong, is, when we have mutual aid, does that mean that they only respond or take action when they're asked to? When there's a mutual aid request?
I mean, sheriff's office, if their deputies drive into town and they see something, they're gonna stop them and take action. We get, we get deputies that cruise through town daily.
I mean, I've, I've seen a few times lately, it seems like a little bit more. I saw, I've seen people pulled over by, actually, it feels like a little bit more by sheriff deputies than by Camden or Rockport police officers. And it makes me so happy every time I see that. And I wonder, well, I mean, I think it's great. I think the sheriff's department is doing a great job. I had a, a great talk with Pat a few months ago. And I was realizing how little I understood about the jurisdictions and what the barriers might be. Does it make sense to put more resources into having the county be more fully or overly staffed so that, like, I guess, is the county having trouble hiring people too? Do you ever, if you had more resources, could you hire more people?
Currently, I have two that I am waiting to hire.
Which is interesting.
Well, it's also level of services that the, that the community expects. By having them help us out, I can bring resources in earlier in the day to be able to do more of those proactive things that you want instead of being in reactive mode, which we have been because of short staffing.
So do our people want to work during the day but not at night?
No, it's not that at all. They just don't want to work 24 hours a day.
Can some of them work during the day but, and move them from the daytime to the nighttime if that's our?
They bid for shifts each year.
They bid for shifts.
My seniority and everybody is working the shifts that they want to be working at this point.
It's just nobody wants the night.
No, it's not. That's not, I don't have the bodies to do it.
The hours in the day.
You gotta have 24, if you got 24-hour coverage, you gotta have bodies to cover those.
So how many people do we have on during the day?
I'm on between Camden and Rockport, the lieutenant's in and the detective sergeant is a day patrol officer. Days are our busy shifts. That's when everybody is running. Night shifts have slowed down some, but there's still, you know, that's still good call volume there. It's the, it's the overnight hours that, we don't have the bars we used to have. We don't have that night activity. There's not a lot of people out and about. But when you reduce that stuff, you know, then you could invite that. So that's why we be creating, you know, we don't say when we're covering, when we're not. And you be creative and you be visible, but.
Wouldn't it be easier if we had the county kind of do, almost doing everything? And they could have a sort of the economies of scale and moving people around and?
I think that is a, at some point down the road, I think you're gonna see a lot more consolidation and things like that. Because it's just not the people. But I think you start small and you see where you go and where you can fill those voids in. But I know you've had times where you've been three or four down. I've been times that I've been three down. And if you want to keep the level of service you have, you have to, you have to keep the number of people, you have to fill those shifts. And if we can do this the way we're doing it now and we can keep that, then you look at staffing levels. Can, can we make a cut? I don't, I don't want to make a cut because we still have.
I'm not saying to make a cut, I'm saying to reallocate resources to, if. I mean, we, this is obviously part of a larger conversation. I guess I would just express that it seems to make sense to.
Well, I, I think we'll, we can definitely say that we're all working together for the same common goal to, to give good professional law enforcement service to the communities here. And if that's working partnerships more with Rockland, Thomaston, they've got a new chief there that's just taken over. We're all gonna work more and more together. And we try to blur those lines because I want my officers, when there's something going on in Rockport, to be there. I want the Rockport officers here. If the county sheriff's deputies hear something's going on, we want them coming. But we have to do the same thing and that's what we have been doing. Fair statement? We've been doing it for years.
It sounds like a really rational approach as, as you're, you're looking at your low call volume, a phrase I just learned. Your low call volume, I'm assuming that's like midnight till 4:00.
Yeah, historically, it's, 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 it's those hours.
Yeah, so rather than having somebody on duty in every town, one person on duty covering multiple towns.
Yeah, within a reasonable response time, you know. I don't want to pick on alarms, but residential alarms are about 99% nationwide faults. So we look at that, we look at how we can handle calls differently. Can we handle a call by a telephone call so somebody doesn't have to respond? I think that's what we've done in a few of these situations.
Do we charge for that, all of these alarms?
After so many, and I think that we, that's, we've, we've mentioned it before. I think we need to go back and look at that and.
Some communities really do. I feel like.
They start charging big time. But I think the number of false alarms has gone down significantly. We get a lot during windstorms.
Well, even if it's not a false alarm, that's a service that is, is being used by some people. I don't have any kind of direct wiring up to the.
Trust me.
I, that's a resource utilized.
For years and, and LA doesn't even, out there in the big cities, they don't even answer them anymore unless it's confirmed burglar holdup or something like that. Because it's just taps resources.
Chris had a question.
Just a quick question. I know we've got two agencies here. What is, what is Troop D Thomason, well, it used to be Troop D Thomason, sorry. Troop D doing as far as its support? I, from my understanding, there's, they don't really have any more state police officers on the road than they, they used to a long time ago.
No, and they're more specialized. I know they do still, I still see troopers out in the rural areas. I live out in Sears-Bon, so I see them quite often out that way.
And are there particular types of things that the different agencies are only licensed to do? For example, is the state police only dealing, only organization dealing with homicide?
Yes. Except for Bangor and Portland do their own homicides, but by statute, the state police is in charge of all other.
So between Camden, Rockport and Knox County, are there any, any things that one is not licensed or able to do?
No.
To provide coverage?
No, we can, we can all enforce basically all the laws of the state of Maine, including fish and wildlife, which I wouldn't even know where to begin or, or things like that. I mean, this.
You are the lake warden. Of course.
I, I know Title 12, but I don't think I ever wrote any tickets.
Well, we should write more out there if you can.
And what about the other agencies with game warden and marine patrol? Are they just such unique situations that there's no?
And we work very closely with Warden Service on a number of issues. Information sharing when they're working cases. Warden Norshia, who is our area warden, I'm in contact with him a lot. We actually handle a lot of wildlife complaints with them because they're spread so thin as well. Typically wounded deer or something like that, they'll call us and say, hey, we don't have anybody. Can you go over and take care of it? And we do that. Try to stay away from raccoons because of rabies and things like that, but we assist them. Warden, marine patrol is probably not so much, but Warden Service is very big with our search and rescue because they are the agency dedicated by state statute and in charge of all search and rescue. So we get them on the horn as soon as we get somebody that's gone missing or wanders or something like that.
So are you able to summarize for, for the people as far as what is the current situation? As far as, you know, the town of Camden is covered by X, Y and Z. As compared to how we were last year, it is this, basically. And are there considerations that need to be thought about? Or maybe you're in preparation for when it comes to the budget season?
So I can summarize it that I'm very comfortable with the agreement that we have and the response time that we are seeing. Like I said, I'm always available for call out and we will have some. I don't think the citizens will notice any difference in the level of service that they have and what they've come to expect and what they pay for. As far as the budget, I say we go with the current staffing level. Because right now, we don't know where this will go. But down the road, if we get six months, a year into this and it's still working and Pat's crew is stable and we're back to numbers that are working for us. Because we, what we don't want to do is, Pat called me someday, says, you know, we'd like to continue, but we're short on deputies. We don't have the staff to do it. And we've already thrown the baby out with the bathwater and we don't have that coverage either. So unless the, the citizens are comfortable with saying, no, we, we're good with no coverage in those hours, which I don't think that's ever going to happen, but maybe. I mean, this.
Nobody wants to see the police until they need to see the police.
Right, right.
It's never on their best day.
I would ask that, give us some time. We've, we've been doing this for a long time. If either one of us feel that it's not working, then we will go back to what we're doing. And if we can build in some cost savings down the road, that would be wonderful. We all know our budgets aren't getting any cheaper.
So a thing that people should be aware of then, that, you know, certainly when you call 911, it's the regional piece. Someone's going to show up, they might be wearing blue or brown, but they'll be coming with the same intent.
Right. You will have somebody respond to your service for your call for service.
I'm gonna ask the question that I think is on a lot of people's minds, which is, what is the nature of your relationship, if any, with immigration? if any, with immigration and customs enforcement?
I guess I can personally say I've never worked with ICE or any of those personally. We're not able to enforce federal immigration law. I have not had any instances where they have called me or any of my staff. I did have a, a time this summer where we were getting inundated with calls that there were two ICE vehicles parked up on Route 52 and there was a roadblock. I drove up through and it was actually two, one was a Kiev camp van, another was a camp and it had an ICC number on the side of it. And I don't know if somebody thought it said ICE, but it was the number that the camp has to have because they're in commerce of transporting people.
But do you have any sort of agreement if you were to make, if someone were to make a traffic stop?
No, we don't have any agreements with any of those agencies.
Do we have a policy for how to handle?
I had this conversation with you briefly. We've talked to our.
A while ago, I thought maybe.
We've talked to our policy advisory committee and.
What's the policy advisory committee?
We contract with Dirgo Safety and all of our policies are main law enforcement accredited standard. They write all of our policies. And I talked with them at the time to ask them if they were going to come up with some type of policy. And they were not looking to, to draft any type of policy at that point.
So despite the fact that we are a border state and we have US Route One going through our community, there hasn't been overtures made to you.
I'll be very honest with you. My officers want nothing to do with it. And I don't blame them. We, we don't want to, we're not a port city. I know Rockland has had this discussion a lot. But at this point, I don't see the need for us to have a policy because the first person they're going to call would be me or the lieutenant or supervisor if they do stop somebody. If somebody's on a civil detainer. So yeah, I want nothing to do with it.
So that, the way, that, the way you just said that is the closest to a policy that I've heard and that's helpful to hear. When I read what the policies are in some other places, I mean, looking at what happened in Waldo County, I'd be interested to hear from Pat also because I know that Waldo County Sheriff went through a whole thing, really looking into that and how to respond to the, I think they call them administrative hits or when you, when you call in somebody's license and they get something back saying, you know, hold this person or whatever.
Look, if somebody's got a federal felony warrant, then we will do something. If it's a civil detainer because they didn't do what they were supposed to, I, we have no intentions of calling anybody. That person will speak to that.
Is that a policy that you educate them on ahead of time or?
What we generally do is the main goal for patrol is enforcement of state law. To the chief's point, we don't have time or the resources to do any federal laws. If we stop a vehicle for a state law violation and if it's an arrest, we arrest them. We're not doing it for immigration purposes.
That is so helpful to hear. And I, Pat explained that to me briefly and it was really helpful to hear it sort of as a resource, not, not, not dragging it all into the political thing, but just we have limited resources. And so regardless of where you come down on all this political stuff, this Oregon, Camden Police is funded by local taxpayers. The county is funded by the county. We hire them to enforce state and local laws, not to devote resources to.
If we were to receive a request to hold someone longer than the normal period of a stop, we would not do that unless we had the legal documents, like a federal arrest warrant or something like that. So we're not going to hold anybody any longer than normal. And so.
Is that, do you guys have that written in a policy anywhere?
We do have a directive, but and we're still, the whole state is researching this and it is, it can be a difficult time. Every jurisdiction does things slightly different.
I would love to see any kind of written policy or directive or whatever you want to call it. It sounds like it would just be enshrining what you've all, what the.
So I did furnish all of our officers a copy of the IACP's recommendation of these types of stuffs.
That would have been a great thing to tell me when I've been badgering you about it. That would be really helpful. That's what I'm asking.
We have to have a state law violation. That's what we're enforcing state law.
If they get stopped for a state violation, driving without a license, they're still going to get a ticket for that.
Right.
We're not hauling them off to have ICE come pick them up or anything like that.
Would, would be great to see the document that you described. That's reassuring. This is, this is.
And just to echo what Randy has already said and what the sheriff has said about some of the challenges, some of the challenges are timely. We have the yellow flag process and the red flag law just passed. A yellow flag process takes anywhere from four to eight hours to complete. So it ties up two employees, takes two people off the road for four to eight hours to do a yellow flag process. The mental health issue is a huge problem and it continues to be. There's a lack of mental health beds in the state. Unfortunately, the county jail and the hospital are the only places people can go that are in a mental health crisis. Unfortunately, the county jail has become sometimes a de facto mental health facility.
What do you see as, is there anything that could happen in the short term or if you had, could request more resources for any particular area to improve the situation?
We need more mental health beds and we need more mental health workers, clinicians, masters levels clinicians that are responding to calls. That would be helpful.
Chris, oh, would you like to add?
Well, this sort of relates to this, but chief, you mentioned that some of the nature of the overnight calls is different from what it was in the years past because of fewer bars and such. What is, I guess I'm curious and the mental health pieces sort of related to this, what is the nature of, what's the shift of the nature of some of the calls or call increase? I mean, we're not seeing fewer, I presume, overall throughout the day, but what's the shift?
So the shift is we went from a town that had 24 hour business. MBNA was here. There was more people on the road. We had a number more bars in the area years ago. That kept activity in the downtown area. I mean, I don't think many of them, except for one in town stays open very late at all now. And you just, you can come downtown anytime and it's, it's pretty quiet. I've worked a number of overnight shifts in the last year or so and traffic is considerably much quieter out there than it, than it was in years past. I don't know if there's been a shift in, shifting at the hospital, but that also affects, you know, number of vehicles on the road at that time of the morning. And honestly, I don't think we have as many year-round residents. Summertime, you know, things are a little different. That's when, if we get into that point, we'll have to, to do more looking at the call volume and what is it's entailing there. But a lot less traffic out there. And I attribute that to the fact that 24 hour businesses pretty much not exist.
I'm, I'm just thinking about as we look at where we can share with some of the more resources, if, if we're seeing more sexual abuse or mental health or those things, is that somewhere also that we can say that we know that there's a sheriff's deputy who has the key training on that?
We've actually considered a mental health detective that deals with only mental health crises and that could be used for the entire county. We have a domestic violence detective as well. And we certainly could maybe use another, more drug detectives, not necessarily to, to go after people that are suffering from the substance use, but to go after the drug traffickers. So we certainly could use more resources and we have researched and talked about having a mental health detective because it consumes an awful lot of time with the, and with the uncertainty with the, the red flag. I'm not saying I'm for or against it. I'm just saying it passed. So that's something that we're going to have to deal with. And we still don't know what that totally looks like. It could take more time now to do a, a red flag law. And so trying to balance people's rights, you know, your right to bear arms and then your right to, you taking someone's civil liberties away if you're taking someone into protective custody. So there's a lot of balancing of rights that you have to do before you make any of those decisions.
Any other questions from the board? Ken, is there anything you'd like to, to add?
Okay. You know who'd make a great mental health detective is Randy. He is the person to, he is really good at crisis hotline.
I will, I will just make one comment about us talking about exploring different resources and sharing. I think whatever we do, we, we just have to be careful and, you know, we should do it incrementally, you know, and, and the chief is right. This, this is working right now and it's going good. So.
Can you give me just an idea of what it looks like to not work? Like we got to make sure chiefs, just an example of like the county implodes or the, like what are we afraid of? What could go poorly about sharing resources? Just tell me. I'm sure it's just not obvious.
An interim budget is one thing we could be afraid of.
Oh, like, oh yeah, county government.
Read the news recently. So that's the challenge. So to give you some background in a sheriff in particular, so sheriff is a constitutional officer elected just the same as the legislators, the senators, the governor, is responsible for law enforcement in the county, but is not responsible to provide patrol throughout the county. So a lot of towns, that's why the four towns have police departments because you wanted more patrol. You wanted more presence, somebody to respond quicker to those types of things. So county sheriffs, and this is true of all the counties, really aren't the rural or not the patrol function for a town. They were originally designed to be that law enforcement investigative type of thing. Now, as society changes, obviously needs change and people want more. So like I said, I've been to nine of the 18 towns so far. I think you're 10th or 11th now, talking about more coverage, more things, need more stuff that we want more safety, if you will. So it's hard for the sheriff because there's not a lot of revenue, if you will, as you learn, speeding tickets in particular, but it's not, it's all traffic violations. That all goes to the state. Even with your criminal convictions, a lot of that goes to the state. We may see some funding at some point, but not very often. Most, for the county especially, our only revenue source for the most part is tax base from property tax. And that can be a challenge at the county level. I've, I've been fighting with the budget committee at the county level since 2016, making the patrol administrator. And it's just a very tough process to fight through trying to ask for some of these resources.
A patrol administrator is what you want?
I was. So that was the lieutenant's position in the sheriff's office. When I first started meeting with the budget committee and the commissioners to talk about budgets and funding for resources. So it's a challenge because 18 towns, 14 are rural and rely on the sheriff. Four towns that don't rely on the sheriff ask questions like, well, we're funding a police department, we're funding a fire department, we're funding this, we're funding that. Why do we need county services? It was nice when everybody had a lot of money. Money's getting a little tight. Evaluations are going up. It's getting more expensive to live and people starting to ask the opposite question of how do we now go in the opposite direction, looking at how do we share resources? How do we say, be more efficient with our money? If you're covering this, can I cover that? So to their point is because this is new, government goes slow a lot of times.
Especially the county.
Well, there's a lot of different players, a lot of different players at the county.
Right.
You know, the commissioners have his district. So it's not just one town, you know, Commissioner Ratner is here. He's got several towns that pick at him to say, we want this for our region. What can we do? So it becomes a little bit more of a struggle at the county level because you just have a lot of people pulling at you. You know, St. George, I've been there three times to talk about how do they get more speeding enforcement? I said, the only way to get more speeding enforcement is to have a contract with the county. Because deputies just are so busy doing other things. I mean, the, since COVID, this world we live in is a much more volatile place. We're responding to a lot more violent crime. We're responding to a lot more person-on-person violence that takes up a lot of time, takes a lot of investigating, getting the story straight because especially when he said, she said, you didn't see who did it, you've got to do a lot of investigation to get that. Presenting that package to the DA's office takes a lot. You know, if you see the, you know, the system is just jammed and they're trying to figure out ways to get rid of the low hanging fruit, if you will. So deputies and officers are trying to do more investigations and making sure that we're only sending the provable cases to the DA's office now, but that takes time. And that's eating away at the speeding, the seat belts, the texting and driving. You just don't have time to do that because you're just busy doing all those other things. Towns have a little more luxury as long as they're fully staffed. When you're not fully staffed, your people are now taking on those other things, you know, such as the chief talked about with the yellow flag. A six hour call with two people that we send a deputy and a detective to deal with every yellow flag. Four to six hours, that's before reports. That's just dealing with the individual, dealing with the healthcare system, dealing with the providers that are supposed to give us guidance on what to do with this person before we even get in front of a judge to then move forward with the process.
And then collecting weapons.
And then, then there's the after part of collecting the weapons, storing those weapons. We were, didn't work out. We were actually looking at a grant to do a central storage facility for the county. Didn't work out. The grant was a micro grant. We would have had to put a lot more money into it than it was worth, but those are things that we're looking at. We just don't necessarily always tell you folks that we're looking at some of these things.
That was so helpful.
Okay, this obviously is a conversation that's broad reaching and could go on and on.
Can I just throw one more thing out there?
We're going to have a committee anyway.
I, I have to say that I've had more contact with the county commissioner since Mark got on the board there. And he was instrumental in getting our dispatch center back up and to where it is today. And he kept me informed all along the way as he did with the other chiefs in the area. And he's probably got a little to do with helping us get some coverage here as well. So I thank you, Mark. I appreciate it. I appreciate sheriff and chief deputy coming over and you all got my number and I can get you theirs. If you've got questions, give me a call if you want to talk. If you've got any concerns or hear constituent concerns, we'd like to hear that too. I think we've got something started here good and we'll, we'll continue to work on it and see if we can make a better product. Thank you.
Clearly everybody is home watching our meeting because they're not out creating any mischief on the streets. So this is a good, good time for you to come and talk. We are grateful for your service and thank you so much for answering a lot of important questions.
Yes, thank you all.
Yeah. Okay.
Right, yeah. Go catch some speeders.
Watch out, could be slippery.
Really?
It's getting there.
It's raining and it's chilly.
It's supposed to get, yeah. Yeah, there is snow forecast in other parts of the state tonight. Okay, we're on to.
Looking forward to it.
Christmas.
Action items. We'll do the approval of the Knox County EMA contract. Since you folks have waited so patiently, we appreciate it.
So I'm Candace Richards. For anyone who has not met me yet, give me some cards in case anyone wants to reach out afterwards. So there was a little confusion about what you're actually going to be acting on. It's not a contract. It's the Knox County Hazard Mitigation Plan. So this is not my plan. This is your plan. So the way we do this process is we kind of act like the middle person. I work with all the towns to get the information that we need from them to update the plan. It's updated every five years, has to go through this long process and follow all these rules. So I work with a consultant to make sure we've met the federal regulations for those plans. And each time they give us different rules to follow. So there were some updates this year. Most of it, if you go through the plan, a lot of it is just a lot of science data, statistics. The two things that the town. Um, the two things that the towns had to do for this is, one is a municipal survey and that is plugged in basically throughout the plan by our consultant. Um, so you, if you go through the plan, you can see Camden reflected in numerous ways. And the other item is developing a list of hazard mitigation projects for your municipal level. It can be anything from culverts to bridges to roads, whatever it is that you guys have identified as could use some work. Whether you have funding available already or not isn't what they're asking for. The feds just want to see that you're thinking about that and considering things like, we know that culvert's gonna get washed over every time we get a bad storm, so let's be a little proactive and upgrade the size of a culvert. Um, hazard mitigation grants can help pay for that kind of thing. So one of the things I've left on the desk in front of you, um, sorry, I hit the microphone there. so you've got your projects here. I gave you kind of a summary, but I also gave you another copy so you wouldn't have to go looking through the big copy of the whole plan if you had that with you. Uh, and Chief Farley is your town EMA director and he's here as well. I did not work on the, the projects themselves, that was all done at the town level with the, a variety of municipal employees. So I've given you a copy of all of the projects that Camden put in the plan for this time, as well as we also put in a new section this year showing which projects have been completed since the last plan was updated five years ago to kind of help FEMA understand that things are getting done and people are putting in the effort to do that. There are two main hazard mitigation grants that are available. There used to also be BRIC, B-R-I-C, I think. And that unfortunately got canceled, so some towns that had projects that could come up in some other form, this whole entire year has just been kind of insane changes with the federal grant process and what's available and what's not. So we don't really know where that's all gonna land. That being said, when you have all of this stuff in your plan, it makes you eligible for a variety of things, not just those hazard mitigation plans, but also some other things. Like I put in my summary, the Community Resilience Partnership Program that gives you like an extra point in your ranking when, when towns apply for that. Um, and there's other stuff out there like that, that look to see if you have that plan. So really what you're doing is you are adopting this plan as the town of Camden's plan. It may say Knox County on the cover, but that's just because we did a lot of the compiling and putting it together and it's the same document for all of the towns and all of the towns did participate. So I didn't wanna take up too much of your time, you guys have already let us hijack your meeting as it is, so.
So we're past the point of, of making changes, right, at this point?
Correct, because it has already been approved by FEMA. There's, you are one of five towns that has yet to adopt it yet. And then once you do, then I get the signed resi- uh, resolution from Odra and I send it to FEMA and then you get added to the list so that if you apply for grant funding that requires this plan um in being in existence for you, then you've got the proof that says we have a federally approved hazard mitigation plan.
That's really the primary function of this document that we're entering into.
Correct, and we just, we did most of the, the collecting of the work and we had a consultant that updated things. Really, the only section I ended up adding, um, the two FEMA people who were reviewing the plan were from Connecticut where they don't have town and county EMA. And everything's handled at the state level, so they were not familiar with a home rule of state. So I had to put in the, the legislative language and such to help them understand because they thought we were just piling you guys all in a room, all the towns together and saying, do that! Well, it doesn't work that way here, we don't tell you guys what to do, we're just here to help, so.
I move that we adopt the 2025 update to the Knox County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second. Are we going to have any time for discussion?
Right now.
Awesome. Uh, one question I had, I know that in the part where it's, you sign, it mentions natural and man-made hazards, though in the document it doesn't have any um speak to threats or risks that are man-made. Why, why would we have it in the signature piece that we're signing about man-made and natural hazards when it's not in the document for the man-made hazards?
I don't, I don't have an, I don't know the answer for that. I, my guess would be, I mean, I noticed that that has always been that way as well, that that type of hazards have not been included in the hazard mitigation plan.
Man-made hazards, you mean, right, or not in?
Man-made and chemical and that kind of stuff. It's because it's never been required. Why that language is on the resolution form, I do not know. It was like that before I came to EMA and it just, it, it's carried over that way and that's how FEMA had us keep it.
Well, I would say, though, to the extent that we build structures and put things in the way of natural processes like culverts or dams or other things that will be, that will create a hazard in the event of a, a storm event, when man-made structures are washed down a waterway, that's the, that would be the interplay between a natural.
Yes, absolutely, things affect each other.
However, man-made threats can also be things like riots and terrorist activity that isn't covered in the, in the, in the threat perspective here. You also, in this case, probably have cybersecurity threats that are more man-made than they are and that may affect the county. What is presented here is simply natural threats, weather-related threats only in this. However, the signature block specifies that we're talking about man-made and natural when the document really does not. And I didn't know why that would be, that why is man, why are man-made threats not noted in the document, only natural threats? That was a question that I had.
That's interesting.
I didn't know why that was that way.
Does that just not fall under this?
Different agency.
Is it, or is it, I mean, threats?
Law enforcement, if we're talking about those types of man-made issues, those, they are not involved in this particular plan. That was actually my college project. Uh, because I have always thought that was strange that those types of issues are not reflected in a mitigation plan, because that's kind of the other half. We've got EMA and we've got law enforcement. That's just not been done. Doesn't mean it can't happen in the future. I don't know why that wording was put in there in that way, I just know that we cannot change it.
Okay. Uh, the, the other question I had then is, in the section where you have different job titles that are expected to perform certain roles and responsibilities throughout the document, um, is there a risk that you are also attaching people's names when those names may change but the job titles are not? Is it a specific reason to list a person's name and what is the effect if a person is no longer in that role? Uh, is there a, um, is that an appendix that can be more easily updated as personnel changes occur? Or is it more appropriate, maybe in future, uh, pieces of documentation to not list the name but list the uh position instead?
That is in there the way it is because that was the federal requirement. What they were looking for there was not to know who the current person is in a position. They wanted to know everyone that had any hand in the planning because the idea was they wanted to see that it wasn't Chief Farley that just got stuck doing it all by himself, but that you had your harbor master, you had your road commissioner, you had these other people that were working.
I understand that, I was wondering, I understand that those were different roles of people that they had that had input. What I was wondering was, with the document, is there any risk in putting a person's name and a role when, when those roles may be filled by other people at some other time? What is the update process um to, if, if Chief Farley is no longer the fire department head, for example, he's here in the room, that's why I mentioned it. But not to say that there's any issue with that, but just to say if there are people's names instead of just positions, is it just, that's just the way it's been done before and there is no risk? And if this gets updated in five years and half the names change, it's okay, that's what the expectation is?
It's not meant to show who, like over a period of time. So we worked on this for about a year and a half. Anyone that I knew of that had their fingers in there at all during that time, whether they're in that position now or not anymore at the end of the process, they're in there. That's what FEMA wanted to see. They wanted their names, they wanted their titles. It doesn't matter what happens afterwards, when we get to this process again in five years, I'm assuming we'll have to do kind of a similar thing. They just wanna know who worked on the plan, not who's currently in the position.
Okay.
It's not assigning responsibility, it's going forward, it's just.
It's not like a directory or, or resource for this is who you should get.
No, it's not meant to be a contact list or anything like that.
This is who chimed in and that's why you have so much, I mean, the information in this thing is phenomenal.
It is phenomenal.
I mean, it's, you know, going through all the various communities and looking at like all the different.
Typically disaster response plans for businesses are about this long or a little bit longer. So this is, this is not, this is not, you know, this is normal for a size of a PR plan.
I'm just applauding the work that has gone into it.
Yeah, it is remarkable.
I'm not surprised, I'm just saying it's a very impressive thought of plan and it's actually got a lot of useful information that.
Any other specific questions?
Um, yeah, kind of. Um, I don't wanna take up too much time here, but, but it's, it's a many pages long document and very interesting, mostly weather-related disasters. Um, and I, I'm glad Chief Farley is here because I was gonna ask, I'm, I'm used to severe winter storms, severe summer storms, I've got shovels, I've got a fireplace, I'm, I'm all set, but I'm scared of wildfire. I've seen it on the news and we have, I've never seen a wildfire. So Chief, maybe you can a, a, address what, what worries you, what, what can we do when it comes to wildfires? I'm strung out by pine trees, um, so I'm, I'm concerned.
Clear, clear cut your lawn.
My lawn is smaller than this table.
I had the privilege of watching the Forest Service work today with three of their helicopters, flying materials around into the state park, so I'm pretty confident that we have a very good resource with the Maine Forest Rangers. That said, I think you'll see in the mitigation plan that there are three areas that we're looking at for wildland, urban interface fires, Curtis Island, State Park and Ragged Mountain Recreation Area as areas that we want to address. Uh, more recently, we had the Forest Service do um an assessment at Mountainside Community. Uh, that is an area that concerns me because of the amount of growth in between residences there. Uh, so they've done a couple of things to do some mitigation in there, they, they brought their chipper program in so that anything that's laying on the ground, they get the folks there the opportunity to gather up the materials and put it through their chipper rather than just laying there. So those are some of the kind of mitigation projects that the Forest Service does.
That's interesting, I hadn't thought of that.
The Forest Service is involved in helping us with that section of the plan.
While you're here, can you describe a little bit about the, uh, the work that's being done between, by helicopter? Just what are they doing? I saw the alert that was really nice that went out, uh, and people should subscribe to the cell phone text plan because that was good to get that awareness. What are they doing? Can you share?
Yeah, it's a state park project. If you've never met Sunshine.
I have.
She is awesome and she's done many great things for the park. And that's one of her um bucket list items before she retires a year from now. Uh, so there were a couple of lean twos up at Bald Rock in Lincolnville and they were um civilian conservation core projects, so those lean twos have been there for many, many years, they were deteriorating. They were removed in the spring and so there, the Forest Service is helping fly the materials in to build new lean twos there.
Nice.
Rather than having to, you know.
Truck it up or carry it up.
Mule it in.
Or just not do it. Any other questions pertaining to this agreement?
So the mitigation is, we do a quick handoff to the Maine Forest Service for, for the actual wildfire fighting, is, is that what, is that what our plan is?
No, we, we actually, we would be responsible for that and they would, they would be a resource to help bring in additional assets.
That's how most towns handle it. I suspect if there's, there's a fire in the woods of some sort, it's usually the towns that I've seen that are first to respond and then others are brought in as it.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a.
They're unpleasant.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, thank you so much for your work.
Absolutely. If you think of other questions, feel free to email me, reach out, come see me.
Just one, one quick thing.
Yeah.
Amber Christie, the county administrator who recently started in that position, came out tonight, so I just wanted to.
She should come up and.
See if Amber wanted to come and say hello and.
Yeah, I think, quite honestly, our chief deputy and sheriff touched on a lot of the important things we're working on in the county right now. Um, we realize there's a lot of missed opportunity with collaboration, sharing resources, we're all in a tight financial situation right now and I'm looking forward to kind of diving into those issues. But happy to answer any questions, I know you brought up a lot of topics tonight that I'm sure you're curious about. Um, so I know our commission's doors are always open, but mine is as well. Um, and we look forward to working closely with you all in the future.
Thanks for coming.
Of course, no, thank you.
Okay, and our final piece of business is the Christmas by the Sea approval of the Atlantic Avenue.
I move that we.
Is there anything else that Odra needs to say about it?
I don't think so.
Okay. I move that we approve the closure of Atlantic Avenue for Christmas by the Sea.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Brilliant. Five zero zero.
I move to adjourn.
And our motion to adjourn.
I'm getting better at this.
You are so good.
It's a weak area, but.
All those in favor? And eight eighteen, strong work, thank you all.
Kind of astonished that Christmas by the.